Before we now come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Colder.
Here.
Thank you. Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Lappy.
Here.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Here.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Here.
Alderwoman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Alderwoman Walker. Alderman Bacaro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Here.
Alderman Grass. President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Iggracia.
Present.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderwoman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Grass.
Here.
Twenty-five, present, you have form.
All right, thank you very much, Sharita. Nice to have you back this week. Uh, for him being present, we'll be led in prayer this morning by the Reverend Oscar Brown of Maple Temple. Reverend, please take us away. Thank you, sir.
Amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day we never seen before, a day that we will never see again, as we are gathered together in this meeting, Father. I pray not God that you guide or lead and direct in Jesus' name. Father, I'm praying not God that we come together in unity and in strength. Oh, God, that we will have a clear understanding of what's going on and what's taking place. I'm praying now, Father, that all is well in this meeting, and that it will come, God, to a good end. I'm praying now to all this well in Jesus' name. And God, we thank you now for what you're doing and what you're going to do and what you have done in the gathering of your people. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Reverend.
God bless you.
Our pleasure. All right, we will dispense with line item three. We'll go to line item four, introduction of honored guests. Anyone have any guests? Alderman from the twenty-third, you are recognized.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
Greg, welcome very much. Good to see you again. And Alderwoman from the fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, the Code Enforcement Department, uh, Arnold Mitchell, Cedric Hamilton, and the guys that were out in field that I saw this morning, uh, Joseph Kempel and Frederick Smith. They're doing a fantastic job.
All right, thank you very much, Alderwoman. Welcome to all those folks. Alderwoman from the twelfth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, your colleagues at the board. I would like for my honored guest to be, uh, the refuse division of the City of St. Louis, who was so kind as inviting me to, uh, shadow them this past Tuesday for over six hours, literally getting my hand, uh, hands into the, the dirt and the trash with bulk pickup and also the side loaders. And they're likewise, just as with code enforcement, doing, uh, a phenomenal job with the resources they do have. So my honored guest would be refuse. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm so excited. I wanted to have as my special guest, all of the parents, students, and community leaders at large that attended the St. Louis Public Schools Citywide Community Meeting. I, it was impressive. They were great contributors, and I'm hoping to see twice as many next time. So thank you, and I'm very pleased with that process.
All right, Alderwoman, thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no further, hands up. We will then proceed to approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the amendments from last Friday, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
All right, so the move by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, second by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth, that we approve the minutes from last Friday. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Riverfront Hotel CID. The reappointment of Ms. Jennifer Burns, the reappointment of Mr. Henry Hearns Jr. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Thank you, Sharita. Alderwoman from the seventh, you are recognized, uh, on the mayor's appointment to the Riverfront Hotel CID.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the Riverfront Hotel CID.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the seventh, second by Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, that we, uh, approve the mayor's appointments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to, to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Central West End, Southeast SBD. The appointment of Ms. Linda Emmaniger, the appointment of Mr. Bradley Jones, the appointment of Mr. Mark Dangerfield, the reappointment of Ms. Mr. Douglas Anderson, and the reappointment of Mr. Oscar Kissel. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
All right, Alderwoman from the seventeenth, you are recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Central West End SBD.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the Central West End SBD.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the seventeenth, second by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we approve the mayor's appointments to the Central West End SBD. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the appointment to the Holly Hills SBD. The appointment of Mr. Brett Reiner, the appointment of Mr. Nick Hesler, the appointment of Ms. Christie Street, the appointment of Mr. Richard Hamilton, the appointment of Ms. Kay Glass, the appointment of Mr. Brooke, Mr. Brooks Gettiger, and the appointment of Ms. Michelle Maiden. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the eleventh, you are recognized on the mayor's appointment to the Holly Hills SBD.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move to, uh, approve the mayor's appointee to the Holly Hills SBD.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, second by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Holly Hills SBD. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and the motion carries.
And six, and a report of city officials.
Thank you, Sharita. We will dispense with line item seven. Board bill, anyone, would anyone like to take any board bills or any resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to remove anything from the informal calendar? Okay, seeing no hands, we will continue to the wonderful section Sharita loves so much, perusing of board bills.
Board Bill Ninety-four, introduced by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement relating to the Lighthouse St. Louis Transportation Development District and containing the severability clause. Board Bill Ninety-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance approving a petition to establish the Lighthouse St. Louis CID, establishing the Lighthouse St. Louis Community Improvement District as a political subdivision of the state of Missouri, approving appointment of the initial board of directors and containing the severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill Ninety-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three three three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the eighty-five-hundred block of Park Lane between the railroad tracks and Switzer.
All right.
I'm sorry.
One second, I have a hand up before we say that's the extent, I believe. Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized. Alderman Cone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to suspend the rules, uh, in order to introduce and first read board bills number ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine.
Okay.
So my motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, that's, I understand. I'm just, do we have these, uh, the fours and the drives?
They are in the drive, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll second that then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing board bills ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine. Uh, is this a, leaves as a roll call vote, is it not, Sharita?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Lappy.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Uh, could I ask a question? I don't see ninety-seven. I see ninety-eight. I don't see ninety-seven. So we voting on ninety-seven and ninety-eight?
And ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine.
I don't have out, and I printed everything out. I, I have ninety-eight, but I don't have ninety-seven or ninety-nine.
You were added to the drive about half an hour ago. Alderwoman, I don't know when you printed them off.
Yeah. Okay, aye. I'll, I'll double check.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Twenty-six, aye votes.
By your vote, you have approved the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-fifth and suspended the rules. So Sharita, please, uh, read board bills ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine.
Board Bill Ninety-seven, introduced by Alderman Shane Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportement Authorizing and Directing the Director of Airports and the Control of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the Second Amendment to the Airport Use and Lease Agreement, and when applicable, the A U A with cargo amendment between the city and the current signatory airlines that was authorized by City Ordinance seven zero two seven three, approved May twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, and City Ordinance seven one two nine five, approved December the eleventh, twenty twenty, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Ninety-eighth, introduced by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportement Authorizing and Directing the Director of Airports and the Control of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the seven, the seven third amendments to the on-airport passenger vehicle rental concession agreement at St. Louis Lambert International Airport with concessionaries, amending the on-airport PVR concession agreements as previously amended, which third amendments were approved by the Airport Commission, contain, containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Ninety-nine, introduced by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the S, that, by the Board of Estimate and Apportement Authorizing the Director of Airports and Control of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the First Amendment to, to concession agreement, A L two one four, between the city and H G St. Louis J V two, doing businesses tech on the go, dated December twenty-first, twenty, two thousand and fifteen, contain the severability clause and the emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Sharita, please assign, uh, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine, transportation and commerce.
So noted.
All right, reference to committee.
To the HUSS Committee, Board Bill Ninety-four, to Ways and Means, Board Bill Ninety-five, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill Ninety-six, and to Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill Ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Thank you very much. Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of the HUSS Committee with the DuPont's recommendation. Board Bill Eighty-nine, introduced by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement Authorizing and Directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed four million six hundred nine and ninety-one thousand plus issuance cost principal amount of tax increment and special district revenue notes. Uh, Armory District R P A one of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, contain the severability clause. Board Bill Ninety, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving the First Amendment redevelopment agreement and C I D intergovernmental cooperation agreement and connection with redevelopment project area one of the Armory District redevelopment area and contain the severability clause. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Okay, we'll dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Uh, Chairman Volmer, uh, could I pull, uh, board bill sixty off of perfection consent, please?
All right, so board bill sixty up, and we're, we're going to go to regular perfection with that, sir?
Uh, yes, please.
Sharita, please remove board bill sixty from the consent calendar and move it to regular perfection.
I'm on it.
All right. So perfection consent.
Board Bill Fifty-four, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three three three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the fifty-two-hundred block of Vernon Avenue between the intersection of Vernon Avenue, Union Boulevard, and Vernon Avenue and Clarendon Avenue. Board Bill Seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Map, Macklin Avenue and the Yosso Street, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Macklin Avenue at the intersection of Macklin Avenue and the Yosso Street and contain the emergency clause. Board Bill Eighty-one, sponsored by Alderman Todd, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three three three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the forty-two-fifty block of Enright Avenue, forty-one-hundred block of McPherson Avenue, eighteen-hundred block of Prairie Avenue in front of eighteen-nineteen Prairie, and the thirty-nine and forty-thousand, I'm sorry, four thousand blocks of Westminster Place. Board Bill Eighty-four, introduced by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of the, the Yosso Street and Newport Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on the Yosso Street at the intersection of Miocho Street and Newport Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill Eighty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance, I'm sorry, pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three three three, as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the forty-nine-hundred block of Miocho Street, forty-three-hundred block of Wilcock Avenue, forty-four-hundred block to forty-six-hundred block of Wilcock Avenue, forty-nine-hundred block to forty-one-hundred block of Alfred Avenue, forty-one-hundred block of Miocho Street, between the intersection of Miocho Street and Newport Avenue and the Yosso Street and Ray Avenue, the forty, forty-one, fifty block of Miocho Street between the intersection of Miocho Street and Atkins Avenue and the Yosso Street and Bo, Boorman Avenue and fifty-thirty block of Murdoch Avenue and the fifty-twenty block of Murdoch Avenue. Board Bill Seventy-four. Sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, for the thirty-one zero one, thirty-one seventeen through thirty-one twenty-three Dalemore Boulevard and thirty-one zero seven through thirty-one fifteen Franklin Avenue area. That's the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Sharita. Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized for the approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth, second by the Alderwoman from the fourteenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. You have adopted the motion by the Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill Seventy-five, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Peel, an ordinance repealing ordinance number seven one zero two eight, establishing the forty-four-hundred block of Gibson Residential Parking District and ordinance number six nine seven four five, establishing the eleven-hundred Taylor Avenue Residential Parking District and establishing a new district, the Gibson and South Taylor Avenue's Residential Parking District, and providing locations and restrictions for current parking within the Gibson and South Taylor Avenue's Residential Parking District.
All right, Alderwoman from the seventeenth, you're recognized on perfection of board bill seventy-five, as amended.
Mr. President, board, I move to perfect board bill seventy-five, as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderwoman seventeenth, and a second by the Alderwoman from the ninth. Any discussion? Um, Alderwomen from the seventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Would the Alderwoman from the seventeenth yield for questions?
Alderwoman from the seventeenth, we yield to questions from the Alderwoman from the seventh.
Yeah.
Hey, I do, I'm, thank you, Mr. President. Would you, what's just one question? I'm just curious, could you tell us, like, who's managing this? I know these, like, have to be managed, that's sort of the neighborhood level. Uh, I'm just curious, who's managing this new park? I don't know if this is a new parking district or renewing an existing one. Could you just tell us a little bit about it? Thanks.
Yeah, this is, um, going to be a new parking district, and the treasurer's office is going to be managing it, and all the management for the parking districts, uh, in the seventeenth board and are going to be managed by, uh, the treasurer's office. And so I, uh, talked to Treasurer Lane, uh, a, a week ago regarding the management of that, and they're actually, the treasurer's office is coming out with new, uh, uh, or, eh, new technology, uh, in order to, uh, implement, uh, the, uh, parking, uh, the parking stickers, and also, uh, to, uh, enforce the parking on the streets, uh, that are residential.
Thank you. That's great. I didn't realize the treasurer's office was doing that now. Um, I'll have to follow up with him. Nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, uh, is, been moved and seconded, we perfect board bill seventy-five, as amended. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. Continue.
Board Bill Sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Rice, and Alderwoman Iggracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement Appropriating ten point six million dollars in funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-one, containing the severability and emergency clause.
All right, Alderwoman from the ninth, you're recognized. We'll have to get a motion in a second, and I believe you have an amendment, so proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move, I guess I'll move to, uh, introduce the amendment first here.
Uh, no, we have to first.
Okay, I'll, I move to, uh, perfect board bill sixty-six.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the ninth, I believe, second by the Alderwoman from the eighth, that we perfect board bill sixty-six. Uh, if you have an amendment, now would be the time to introduce it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have an amendment. Um, and if you, uh, look in the perfection, uh, folder of our drive, uh, you'll see in there the board bill sixty-six amendment one. Um, and I guess, uh, may I have the, um, clerk read that amendment?
Certainly, Sharita. Does be amendment one.
Okay, give me just.
Sixty-six.
I'm sorry, where is that located? I just see the clean copy. I, I know it's in here somewhere. I didn't have it printed out.
The perfection folder.
Amendment one, so, board bill sixty-six, so, amends say a board bill on page, board bill number sixty-six on page six, line fourteen is followed. Beginning on page six, line fourteen after the words, "As may be updated from time to time by city council's office, insert the following words and figures." Section three, in order to ensure efficiency, effectiveness, equity, and transparency, transparency of the use of taxpayers' funds and relief programs to address the coronavirus pandemic, representation of the Community Development Administration and Regional Arts Commission, shall present to the Board of Alderments Convention and Tourism Committee on a quarterly basis through twenty twenty-six or until funds are fully expended.
All right, that's the extent of it. Alderman Carter, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so after, uh, a wonderful discussion in our, uh, conventions and tourism committee, uh, the chairman had asked that we just add a section in there about being able to, um, report back to the committee about the funds being spent and how they're being spent. Um, as it says, is to make sure that there's transparency in, in the bill, uh, as to how these funds are spent. So, um, this was a, uh, one of the things asked for by the chairman, and we were happy to oblige. And so, uh, amendment one is, is essentially just laying out, uh, a quarterly reporting system. So I guess I would like to, uh, move that we, uh, add amendment one, uh, to board bill sixty-six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion by the Alderwoman from the ninth, and a second by the Alderwoman from the twelfth. I do have a hand up, uh, discussion, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, before we proceed.
Um, I have a question. I, I'm wondering if, um, the, perhaps the funds aren't fully expended by the, the twenty twenty-six deadline, what happens to those funds?
Okay, uh, were you, are asking a question of the Alderwoman from the ninth?
I'm sorry, I, I have a question for the, for the Alderwoman from the ninth.
Alderwoman from the ninth, we yield to a question from the Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Absolutely.
Please proceed, Alderwoman.
If these funds are not fully expended by that time, what happens to the funds?
Um, I believe if you take a look through the original board bill, um, there's an outline in there from the Regional Arts Commission about their, uh, plan on spending through twenty twenty-five. Um, so I believe that, uh, that through twenty twenty-five, all the funds will be allocated. So through twenty twenty-six, they'll be reporting back to us. Um, so it's, I'm pretty certain they're gonna be able to spend all the funds.
Okay. I just wanted to know, perhaps something would happen that they wouldn't? Do we lose those funds? They go back to the federal government?
I'm not sure. We, we have a whole lot of ARPA funds that I think we have that same question with. But working with the Regional Arts Commission, like I said, they have an outline at the very end of one of the. Amen, or one of the. Bottom, I guess, of the bill, it has kind of lined out how they're gonna spend each year now through twenty twenty-five.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, we do have a motion from the Alderman from the ninth and a second by the Alderman from the twelfth. To adopt amendment number one. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. I'm sorry, was that Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman, thank you. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Negrasia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Bakoro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alder, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Brass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Switzer. Twenty-six, I vote.
Thank you, Sharita. By your votes, sustain the motion of the Alderman from the ninth. And adopted amendment number one to Board Bill sixty-six. We will now proceed with Board Bill sixty-six, which has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, Alderman Gunther?
No, not necessarily. I'll just kind of mention, I, I spoke quite a bit about this at, during the Convention and Tourism Committee, but. I believe we all remember from October of twenty twenty-one, we had this fine piece of paper. From the leaders of the St. Louis Arts and Culture Community, we had over a hundred and ten. Arts organizations all reached, reached out to every one of us, just kind of outlining the need for our arts and culture community. We. We have reports that show that behind the service industry, that the number two industry that was affected by the COVID. The COVID pandemic was our arts community, so we're hoping that with this bill. We'll be able, the city of St. Louis will be able to show that we truly appreciate and support our art community. The pre-pandemic economic levels of spending for arts in our region was over six hundred million dollars pre-pandemic. It's larger than all of our sports combined, so there's a huge desire for our, our, our community here to. Be able to recoup some of their losses, but also respond to the negative economic impacts of the COVID pandemic, so. I appreciate everyone's support and I guess I renew my motion for approval of Board Bill sixty-six as amended.
All right, Alderman from the fifteenth, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Members of the Board. I'd just like to ask to be added as a co-sponsor.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you, President. I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Okay. Anyone else? I see the Alderman from the twentieth would like to be a co-sponsor also. Sharita, please make note of that. Anyone else like to be a co-sponsor before we proceed?
Mr. President, please add, please add me as well.
Uh. That's why, Alderman Laffey, all right, so we have the seventeenth, the seventh, the nineteenth, the twenty-third, the twenty-eighth, the twenty-fifth. Then I would like to make a motion.
That's what I was gonna make.
There we go. Somebody caught on. We have a motion to embank Board Bill sixty-six.
Second. Second.
Second by Alderman from the eighth. All in favor of embanking Board Bill sixty-six, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, opposed? Motion carries Board Bill sixty-six will be embanked. Please make note of that, Sharita.
So noted.
All right, any further discussion? Alderman from the twelve, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to make a quick comment on the bill, if that's all right.
Certainly, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very excited to support this bill and likewise co-sponsor it on banking before. But I do want to voice my support for including the amendment that we've just added to it, to all of our. ARPA fund bills, the American Relief Plan Act bills, moving forward. I think that's a very sensible. Privilege that we as the powers of the purse as a legislative body are entitled to, so. I just wanted to state for the formal record that I would like to see. The inclusion of a quarterly report mandate. On further bills and what a brilliant board bill that we've introduced it, introduced this new, this new mandate into, so. That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing no hands. He, I believe you're recognized to close, Alderman from the ninth.
I really thank you, everyone. The, the work of the Regional Arts Commission and the mayor's office, the support of the mayor's office on this. Really shows by having this embanked, so really thank you, everyone, and I renew my motion.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favors of adopting Board Bill sixty-six as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We will proceed now to third reading consent.
Um, Mr. President, we have.
This one?
We have Board Bill sixty.
I forgot, we moved it over. I apologize for that. Board Bill sixty, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you were recognized on Board Bill sixty, or you have to read that first, Sharita.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Sixty, introduced by Alderwoman Negrasia, President Ballmer and the following other persons. Tyus, Bosley, Bakoro, Boyd, Switzer, Peel. Todd, Evans, Page, Howard, Middlebrooks, Vince Gunther and Clark Hubbard. And ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Benjamin Paulson Place. Pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the intersection of Shawmit Place and Bridge Avenue. And run north, north on Shawmit Place to the intersection of Shawmit Place and Wells Avenue.
All right, and. It's. Alderman from the sixth, you were recognized on Board Bill number sixty.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill sixty is designation of an honorary street name for our fallen firefighter Benjamin Paulson. This will be placed outside of Station thirteen, which is where Benjamin Paulson was, was housed. And. The, his brothers and sisters at the fire department put this request in. I think it's. A nice way for the board to further honor the sacrifice that he made. And be able to tell his story from not just the people who know him who are there now. But anybody who, who starts to work there is in that community in perpetuity, and so I would move that we perfect Board Bill sixty.
All right. We have a. Motion by the Alderman from the sixth, a second, I believe, was Alderman from the twentieth?
Eighth.
Oh, it's eighth, pardon me. To adopt, we have a hand up, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, discussion?
Yes, thank you, President Ballmer. I won't belabor the point, but just given the nature of this bill and the significance of firefighters, firefighter Paulson's sacrifice. I would move that we make this bill embanked, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, it's been moved by Alderman twenty-fourth, seconded by the Alderman from the nineteenth, that we embank Board Bill sixty, all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Board Bill sixty? No further discussion. Alderman from the sixth, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
All right. With the motion and second, all those in favor adopting Board Bill sixty, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Board Bill's for perfection.
Okay, third reading consent.
We have none.
Third reading and final passage.
We have none.
All right. On the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. Alderwoman Boyd, you have a motion? Please, unmute yourself. Thank you.
I was like, hold on, here I come. Yes, Mr. President, I would like to. I would like to recommend to embank. Resolution for Colonel John Hayden, and I'm trying to find the. Resolution.
I believe it's.
One eleven.
Yes.
I'm asking if we could embank the resolution for Colonel John Hayden, who served as the chief police for the city of St. Louis. Please.
Please make a motion.
Okay, you want me to try it again?
Yes, yes, I, please, make a motion to do that so we can receive a second.
I'd like to make a motion to embank Resolution one eleven.
Second. All right, I have a. Alderman from twenty-seven with a bank resolution and I believe was seconded by Alderman from the fourth. That we embank Resolution one eleven, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Sharita, please make note of that change.
So noted.
All right, seeing no further. Alderman from the eighth, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add my name to Resolution one twelve as well, please.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the fourteenth, your hand is up.
I would like to move that we embank Resolution number one twelve, if no one has any objection.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, I believe that we embank Resolution one twelve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sharita, please make note of that change.
So noted.
All right. And Alderman from the ninth, you have your hand up. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to add my name to Resolution one fourteen.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that change. Any further changes? So noted, thank you so much. Okay. With that, we'll go back to Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by the Alderman from the eighth, that we adopt our Courtesy Resolutions Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And we will move on to. Line item, my pages don't stick together anymore. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one ten sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook. The Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis. Recommend that the Port Authority participate in industrial revenue bond transaction with the developer. To provide one fifteen years of real property tax abatement in the following percentages. Ninety percent for the first five years, seventy-five percent for the. Next five years and fifty percent for the last five years and a two. A sales tax exemption on construction materials for the project.
All right, Alderwoman Middlebrook, you were recognized on Resolution one ten.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to make a motion to move Resolution one to the committee.
Entertainer second.
Point of order.
Uh. Yes, sir. Point of order stated.
Court authority bills usually go to transportation and commerce.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I would like to make a motion to move Resolution one to transportation.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the second, do we? Move Resolution one ten to T and C, anyone in second?
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. That we move this to transportation and commerce, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. We're moving one ten to transportation and commerce. Alderman Howard, you recognize a Resolution one thirteen.
Yes, I would like to have all Resolution one thirteen placed in Public Safety.
Okay, entertain a second on that.
Second.
Sharita, please, Sharita. Yeah. Before you read, we actually need to read the bill, read the resolution.
Resolution one thirteen sponsored by Alderwoman Howard. And Alderwoman Boyd, police compensation, officer retention and recruitment.
All right, Alderman Howard, now you can make your motion.
I would like to make a motion to place Resolution one thirteen in Public Safety Committee.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, that one thirteen go to Public Safety. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, October fifth, twenty twenty-two, Streets Committee will have a meet at ten AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Thursday, October sixth, us will have a meet at nine AM via webinar. And Friday, October seventh, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to send our condolences to Jimmy, Judge Jimmy Edwards. He lost his father. And so I just wanted to send our condolences to Jimmy Edwards and his family in this time of his sorrow.
Okay. Our condolences go out to. His honor. Thank you very much for making us aware of that. Alderman from the fourth, you are recognized.
Yes, I'd just like to wish myself a happy birthday on this coming Tuesday. Live to see another milestone. Go into that. That's it.
All right, well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay, Alderman, Alderman from the seventeenth, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I wanted to announce that this Saturday, there's Grove Fest. In Forest Park Southeast from three to eleven PM.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman from the twelve, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There we go, want to put my hand down. There's a standing invitation for all of us here at the Board of Aldermen and in other critical leadership roles. To join refuse to shadow for not necessarily six hours, but to better understand the issues presented to them, so if anyone is interested. In shadowing refuse and meeting individual city employees. Or in the future as we work to. To enter into other engagement opportunities with other divisions, please feel free to reach out to myself. Mark. Is the AFSMI Union, the American Federation of So-and-So-Forth Union, so thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the eleventh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to invite everybody who's free tomorrow afternoon to come down to. Fennetti Park for the Fennetti Music Fest. We've got everything from hip hop to Americana going on. From one to seven down in Patch. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
It was kind of blurred. I missed words, where it's happening.
Fennetti Park down in Patch. Where the triangle is.
All right. Alderman from the, Alderman from the fifth, you're, you're recognized. Alderman from the, Alderman from the fifth, you're, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that, uh, this coming Tuesday, October fourth, is National Night Out. And, uh, while I have the floor, I'd like to cordially invite everyone to two, um, National Night Out events that will take place in the Fabulous Fifth Ward. One will take place at, uh, directly across the street from Crown Candy Kitchen at the, uh, Crown Plaza at Fourteenth and St. Louis Avenue. The second one will take place at, on the patio of Rosalita's, uh, on Washington Avenue. And that event will also feature, for anyone who wants to, opportunities to tour the, uh, bicycle unit, the Police Bicycle Unit, which is, uh, about a hundred steps away from that patio. Uh, with that, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-first, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Deborah Phillips from the Recorder of Deeds Office, who has retired after thirty-two years of exemplary service. Um, she'll be having a celebration this evening at twenty-seven-twelve Cherokee. Um, additionally, I would like to wish a very happy birthday to Alderwoman Norma Walker. Today is her day. Happy birthday, Norma.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Alderwoman. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you're recognized.
Yeah, just wanted to let everybody know and invite everyone down to Skinker de Oliver Porch Fest this weekend. It's always a good time. Uh, you know, they all have a, the tent set up at the corner of DePere and Kingsbury, where, where they have the beer tents and some, uh, food trucks. But then the cool thing about Porch Fest is just, you know, all the neighbors have different musical acts going in their front yard. So you can kind of go around and then see a different, bunch of different shows in people's front yards, which is kind of cool. So, uh, that's it. It's one to six on, uh, Sunday, October second. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Alderman from the second, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to wish my husband, um, a very happy anniversary. We celebrated our first anniversary this week, so thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, Alderman from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, SSM Cardinal Glennon Children's Hospital is hosting a free community drive-through flu clinic, um, on Saturday, October eighth. So this is next Saturday, not this coming Saturday. Um, in the parking lot next to the Ronald McDonald House. So if you've got folks who are waiting for flu shots, um, they, it's, it's free. That'll be there for anyone six months and older. Um, it's not the high-dose one, but, um, keep that in mind as folks are looking for flu shots as we're getting into that season. Um, and I also want to extend our best wishes to the Alderwoman from the thirteenth, as she is moving, uh, into her wedding tomorrow. I hope that she and Jimmy have a wonderful, beautiful day with all of those wild flowers from her yard. I'm just sending all of our well wishes and, uh, and happiness for them and their marriage to come.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations to Alderman from the thirteenth. All right, um, finally, the Alderman from the fourteenth, you're recognized.
I wish everybody, you know, a wonderful weekend and, and the festivities, but I would like to remind people of the devastation that's taken place in Florida and to keep them in your thoughts and prayers over the weekend. And hopefully, we will find out that everybody survived and, and there's a minimum amount of, uh, life lost there. So please keep that in your, in mind over the weekend. Uh, there's been a lot of devastation down there, so that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Alderwoman. All right, no further hands up, no further hands up. Alderman from the twenty-sixth has been leading a boring life lately. All right. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, still getting a bit of a chuckle out of the remarks about the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth. I know she's always hustling. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse the Alderwoman from the first ward and the Alderwoman for the, from the thirteenth ward for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, the second by, who's the second?
Second.
All second by Alderman the eighth, that we excuse Alderman for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
All right, the ayes have it. Okay, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adjourn until Friday, October seventh, at ten AM by a webinar.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth, that we adjourn to October seventh, twenty-twenty-two at ten AM. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
It's like Simon says, I love it. All right, all those who pay us posts. I, the ayes have it. We'll see you next, October seventh. Thank you very much. Go Cardinals.